7:00 PM, I will call this regularly scheduled meeting for October 5th to order. And if you would all mute your microphones and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call, roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Goffel.
Here. And so we are all here. And this is Domestic Violence Action Month. We are very proud to have one of our community partners with us tonight. Lynn Shutey, representing Cora, is here to receive this proclamation. Whereas intimate partner violence is the leading cause of injury to women between 15 and 44 years of age, and one in three women and one in seven men experience some form of physical violence by their intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas experts estimate that in the United States, the costs of intimate partner rape, physical assault, and stalking exceed $5.8 billion a year, nearly $4.1 billion of which is for direct medical and mental health care services. This includes almost $1 billion per year in productivity losses. And whereas there were 6,613 requests for service through Community Overcoming Relationship Abuse, Cora, their 24-hour crisis hotline, and law enforcement referrals last year, and 1,506 adults and teens received community education on healthy relationships and the impact of intimate partner abuse. And whereas in San Mateo County, 189 adults and children were provided emergency shelter, and 74 adults and children were provided supportive housing to escape their abusers last year. And whereas 784 adults and children received therapy to help them with domestic violence-related trauma, and Cora fielded 1,659 requests for legal assistance. Whereas 153 adults and children from the city of San Mateo received services to support their safety and healing, free from violent homes and relationships. And whereas intimate partner violence continues to be among the most under-reported crimes, and the city of San Mateo is committed to eliminating all forms of intimate partner abuse. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of San Mateo, State of California hereby designates the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further resolved, the citizens of San Mateo, California should help raise awareness and do their part to help rid our community of intimate partner violence dated October 5th, 2020. Joe Goffel is mayor. Lynn Shutey, welcome, and thank you for representing Cora Communities Overcoming Relationship Abuse. You are one of our really valued partners in stemming the tide of this domestic violence.
Thank you so much for having me and for all of the city's support. I think everybody has been hearing a lot more about domestic violence since the shelter in place. And I can tell you that here at Cora, we have seen a higher lethality. We're, and you're seeing it on the news too, I'm sure, whenever you turn on the TV. There's a lot of reports all over the nation, really, but certainly in the Bay Area as well. And so we're proud to partner with the city of San Mateo, including the Police Department, in helping to address this issue. It's a public health issue. And just, you know, a footnote, I used to work with the YMCA of San Francisco and working in their counseling department. I can tell you that those statistics that you read out loud about one in four women and one in seven men, we saw it there. We worked with the city of San Mateo in getting referrals of youth who were getting in trouble. And I can tell you, a lot of those youth came from families where there was domestic violence. So I'm working now at Cora for the last seven years, more or less, and I can see this is the root. This is where things start. And if we're able to provide families with the support they need as soon as possible, we can really prevent a lot of the problems that the city of San Mateo is seeing throughout the city.
Thank you so much. We look forward to greater awareness throughout the month of October, and we appreciate your support. Thank you so much, Lynn.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you call, read the titles of the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number two, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number three, Regulations on the Sale of Electronic Cigarettes, Flavored Tobacco, and the Sale of Tobacco Products in Pharmacies, Ordinance Adoption. Item number four, Building Electrification Reach Codes, Ordinance Adoption. Item number five, High Voltage Streetlight Conversion Phase III Engineering Services Agreement. Item number six, On-Call Private Development Services Amendment. Item number seven, City-Owned Commercial Properties COVID-19 Rent Waiver and Forbearance Agreements. Item number eight, Park Rehabilitation and Improvement Per Capita Grant Applications. Item number nine, Winter 2020/21 Tree Planting Services Agreement. Item number 10, Classification Updates, Community Development Department. Item number 11, General Plan Housing Element Preparation Collaboration Agreement. And item number 12, Cut the Commute Pledge.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Is there any member of the council who'd like to pull an item on the agenda, on the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there any member of the public who would like to pull an item on the consent agenda? I see no hands.
There is one.
Hold on. Now there's one. Doug Deanna.
Mr. Mayor, I think he's calling to be on public comment, which is next.
Okay. I'll lower my hand.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will get to Doug in just a moment. So there are no members of the public wishing to pull an item for the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bonilla.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Goffel.
Yes. That item, the consent agenda passes unanimously. We're on to public comment. Now is the time for public comment for items that are not appearing on our regular agenda. Any member of the public would like to speak on an item not on the agenda may speak at this time. And I believe we have participants, starting with Doug Deanna. Doug, give us your public comment. Thank you, sir.
I'm Doug Deanna, and I filed a petition for zone modification for our South Downtown Parking Zone on November 22nd, 2019. And that modification was to separate the R5 apartments and condos north of 9th Avenue with the R1 homes south of 9th Avenue because they are two different neighborhoods by zoning, name, and character. On April 2nd, I received an email from Sue Ellen Atkinson that Public Works would not be able to process this further due to COVID-19, and they would take this up again when they return to normal operations. Well, it's been six months, and I've heard nothing, but I've seen Public Works employees working all around San Mateo, even on my block. And if your Public Works staff, working from home, like most of us, can send a survey that only requires it being typed up, getting it printed and mailed, and then tabulating the results, I'm trying to figure out what's the delay. But more importantly, why am I having to bring this to a city council to get some kind of action, like a tattletale, saying, hey, your people don't respond to the people who live in the city? Six months, and I've heard nothing, and that's poor communications. And hopefully you can direct them to get on it. Also, I'd like to point out that the four streets requested this modification are Palm, Laurel, Rosewood, and 10th. I'd also like the council to direct Public Works to only survey those streets, as we are the ones requesting it. As for your own policy, it states, quote, "The goal of the residential parking permit program is to allow residents to park on the street in their neighborhood while restricting long-term parking by non-residents." Fact is, those who live in the apartments and the condos north of 9th Avenue are in a different neighborhood. They are South Downtown. We are Glazewood. We are R1, historical neighborhood. They are 1970s, 80s condos and apartments. And our streets are often filled with people who live outside our neighborhood, and our neighborhood is south of 9th Avenue, not north of 9th Avenue. And I'd like to have the city council direct the Public Works to take, not take six months to move on these things. Now, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to make this public comment, and hope that they can move the ball forward on the signed petition that I went door on door, knocked on all the doors in my neighborhood, to you know what it's like if you're running for council, to get petitions signed and people to sign on. All those people signed on to this back in November. So I'd like to get some action on that.
Thank you, sir. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter that is not on the agenda, but we can take your comments and refer to staff for follow-up. Is there any further public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for the next item on the agenda. Item number 13 is our COVID update from the city manager.
All right. You have a seat for my presentation?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and get started. This is this week's COVID-19 update. I want to start with the health orders. San Mateo County, we are currently in the red tier. We have been that way since September 22nd. Our current adjusted case rate is six daily cases per 100,000 population, and our positivity rate is 3.7%. In order to move to the orange tier, our adjusted case rate is going to have to move below 3.9 daily cases per 100,000 countywide. Our overall positivity rate will need to stay under 4.9%. And then the positivity rate in the most disadvantaged areas of the county will need to be at 5.2% or less, and that's the new state equity metric. So we're still a ways away in terms of case rate to get to the orange tier. So operationally, distance learning is still going on. We're currently serving 96 students between the King Center and the Senior Center. We had an increase of 36 students since we began this program on August 17th. We originally projected the cost for the first session, which runs through the end of this week, $52,000. The update based on, you know, the program getting underway and us adding students is now the projected cost is going to be approximately $120,000. We are headed into the final week of the first session, and we noted when we began this, and we're at the place that we thought we would be today, which is, we expect continued demand for this program through at least the end of the calendar year. And so if we were to go through the end of the calendar year, we project the cost for session two is going to be approximately $150,000. The PAL program has agreed to contribute $50,000 of that, as many participants are from PAL families. And also, I'd like to point out that we are, Parks and Recreation is getting some program savings through the cancellation of budgeted activities. And so actually, we think that from an expenditure perspective, that these additional costs will be offset by expenses that we will not incur this year due to canceled programs. However, the real impact on Parks and Recreation is going to be revenue generation, which is really a problem with the cancellation of some of our budgeted activities. So what we're planning to do is return in January or February, when we do our mid-year budget update, with the actual cost for this program, should council direct us to proceed, and also provide an update on where Parks and Recreation revenues are. So continuing on with Parks and Recreation, our playgrounds at the parks are now fully open. It was based on guidance that we received on last Tuesday, September 29th, from the state that allowed them to open. Lots of credit goes to staff. We got not only Parks and Recreation staff, but some Public Works staff helped out, so we were able to get the parks open within a couple of days of getting the state guidance prior to getting the playgrounds open. We had all equipment cleaned and sanitized. We've put hand washing stations in at parks that don't have restrooms. And then we've produced signage on playground health and safety guidance that's been posted in English and Spanish at all of our playgrounds. And as you see on this slide, there's a couple of pictures. We have occupancy limits at each of the playgrounds. We have the Play It Safe California Guidance on Playground Safety, and then additional implementation on social distancing. Continuing on operationally, the city manager's office ran a mobile COVID-19 testing site at the King Center a few Saturdays ago on September 26th. Many thanks to city staff who put that on, as well as the support that was provided by our CERT volunteers and by SMC Fire. We administered 126 tests, and that included 25 to folks who had pre-registered, and then over 100 walk-up attendees were able to be served that day as well. And then finally, Community Development, they've been coordinating census canvassing. They did that last week. They also helped out with getting some materials together on the census that were handed out at the COVID-19 testing site, as well as at the Grab and Go Lunch Program at the King Center. And they're going to continue coordinating canvassing efforts through the end of the census, through the end of the census as staff availability permits. And with that, in terms of council confirmation, there's none requested of actions that I've taken in response to the local emergency proclamation. However, I would like to get confirmation tonight that council is supportive of us continuing the distance learning support through the remainder of the calendar year. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any member of the council want to speak to this agenda? Or let me be more specific. Anyone want to not continue the learning centers? Nope. I think everyone is strongly supportive. It's a huge success. Way to go, team. We're very proud of it. Continue onward. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
With that, we will close item 13, move on to item number 14, which again is Drew. And League of California Cities, and this particular item comes to us because the League of California Cities has requested not only that our designated representative, but that the entire city council weigh in on this agenda item. Drew, you ready with your presentation?
Yes. Thank you for that introduction. As the mayor noted, typically what happens is the city selects a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and then the delegate votes on resolutions at the General Assembly. This year, there is a resolution that I think is substantive enough that the league wanted their delegates to get full council direction for how to vote on resolution number one. And so what resolution number one is, is it calls upon the U.S. Congress to amend Section 230 of the Communications Decency Act. And what it would do is, would request that, you know, if this resolution were to pass, that online platforms must implement a reasonable program to identify and remove content that solicits criminal activity. They must provide information to law enforcement to assist in the identification and apprehensions of persons who use the platform to engage in criminal activity, and failing to do so revokes their immunity from criminal or civil liability. And so where this came from was as a resolution sponsored by the city of Cerritos, and it's in response to them, they incurred costs for responding to threats of looting at the Cerritos mall via social media channels. So it's something that we've also seen here locally. We had a similar situation with threats of looting the Hillsdale Mall, so we are familiar with this issue. And I just quoted something from the city of Cerritos in their analysis on this, where they're saying ultimately, they support the First Amendment, but they believe that the city should be able to hold social media companies liable for their role in promoting criminal acts. There's some considerations, though, with respect to this particular resolution. So Section 230(c)(1) of the Communications Decency Act basically protects websites from lawsuits if users post something illegal. There's some limited exceptions to that, but for the most part, basically, websites cannot be sued for posting illegal activity. So the league did some analysis on this, and they did point to a couple of constitutional concerns with the resolution. So there's a First Amendment concern with Section 1 of the resolution, and then there's Fourth Amendment concerns with Section 2 of the resolution. Now, while they did point to those concerns, they did also note that they cited concerns with using, the use of social media as a tool, you know, for organized criminal activity, organized violence. And then finally, council did receive a letter from the Electronic Frontier Foundation opposing the resolution. They also cited the constitutional issues, as well as the burden on smaller, community-focused websites. And so with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, we can see if there's any questions from the general public. Any attendees wishing to ask a question on this item? I see no hands raised. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Anyone done particular research in this area? I will throw out there, one of my concerns is increased liability, whether it's liability for cities or liability for websites. It becomes fraught with lawsuits and other things, and I'm not in favor of infringing on free speech rights. All of that sort of leads me to not necessarily be in favor of this amendment or this resolution, but I'm open to other opinions. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Thank you. I tend to agree, Mr. Mayor. You know, when you're running, especially running a small website, you got a lot of people that can be posting something in the comments or just causing trouble in one way or the other. And just like if a criminal organization decided to use UPS or FedEx or the post office to send out a bunch of mailers organizing something, how we wouldn't necessarily say, oh, it's FedEx's fault. They'd need to figure out a way to open the packages and make sure everything is reasonable. I don't see it reasonable to ask all websites to do that, too. I mean, maybe some websites like Facebook or Google have the vast, vast resources to be able to do this, but the majority of websites don't, and this just seems to be unreasonable to me. So I tend to agree.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, I think it's one of those things at first blush, you know, it looks like the intent is, you know, is to squelch criminal activity, but I would agree with the analysis that have been laid out so far, that it's, I think that it could have very negative, unintended consequences that I do not feel comfortable supporting. And in, you know, just a very cursory level of research into, you know, what the mechanisms are in place already through the Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, NICRIC, and that there are sufficient mechanisms in place to monitor criminal activity, and that there are, procedurally, there are important checkpoints in terms of running investigation, having an arbitrator through the court system define when somebody's identity or their communications should be disclosed. And I don't personally feel comfortable empowering private companies to make those decisions as censors or as decision-makers about whose identity is disclosed. And furthermore, I feel discomfort with the lack of definition of what criminal activity entails, and I think that that could really backfire for a number of reasons. So for those reasons, I can't support this resolution.
Rick or Diane, do either of you feel you need to be heard?
I'm here to listen. I have my other opinion, which basically lines up with the three opinions I've heard, and I would like to hear Diane's opinion.
Diane doesn't like to share her opinion. She likes to keep it.
I'm putting it on the spot. Come on.
I'm giving you a gift, Rick, a big gift. You're not taking, no. I mean, I concur. It's not something I'm prepared to wade into. I will say that I would like to see the bigger players do some more of their own, self-policing is not the right term, but have some more in-depth programs. But I'm not prepared to send Rick to vote to wade into this at this moment in time.
Mr. Mayor, that's enough direction for me. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember Bonilla. Drew, you don't need to vote. So we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number 15. This is Consideration of Sponsorship of the San Mateo Foster City School District Education Foundation's Virtual Gala. I don't know that they've had a gala in the past. I don't recall one ever. This might be the first ever.
They usually have, like, the schools have their own. So this one is being done by the foundation itself, which, you know, crosses all schools in the district. But each school usually does its own sort of fundraising. It looks like this one is very particular to technology, as best I can tell, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have a public speaker who might be able to talk a little bit more about this.
Excellent. Let's go to our public speaker, unless Drew feels like talking.
I'm okay. I think my slide shows the details, and I think it would be great to go to public comment.
Excellent. We'll go to our own Shar Watkins, trustee, board member, San Mateo Foster City School District. Welcome, Shar.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks so much, and thanks for providing me with an opportunity to speak. As Mayor Goffel's mentioned, I'm one of our board trustees for the San Mateo Foster City School District. I am the board trustee who's leading at a foundation gala that has happened many, many, many years ago, before most of us probably even remember or were around. So the attempt is really to bring back this tradition from a long time ago. Our overarching goal is to bring much-needed funding to our students and to be able to distribute that funding equally across our school sites. As Councilmember Pappen shared, many of our school sites do host their own gala that are able to bring in a wide range of funding opportunities for students at those particular sites. And the goal of this is really just to provide funding across our school sites, not just to schools that are able to raise significant funds. Outside of that overarching goal, there is a goal around raising awareness about the education foundation, the work that they're doing, and continuing to support and involve our entire community as we work to support all of our students. Given the current climate of, you know, where we are and how we're supporting our students right now during COVID and digital learning, the funds are going to support broadly what we're referring to as digital innovation. Our school teams, our site teams, our district leadership is finalizing what that will look like exactly for each of our grade-level bands, but as a whole, it will be around supporting digital innovation, specifically through virtual enrichment programming. So above and beyond sort of the basic needs that are being met, curriculum, et cetera, kind of really supporting that enhancement and that enrichment. Our goal for this event is to raise $500,000. Thus far, we have received an outpouring of support across industries throughout the city of San Mateo, and of course, in Foster City as well, but we still have a lot of work to do to meet this goal. So, you know, here to just share a little bit more about the event and would appreciate the council considering sponsoring the event, both monetarily and also seeing all of you in attendance on Friday, October 3rd. This invitation extends to all the community members that might be listening this evening. We hope that all of you will share widely and encourage your friends and your supporters and community members, business leaders, to be in attendance that evening to raise the necessary funds for our students. And if there's any questions that you guys have as you engage, I'll be sticking around. Thank you so much for consideration.
Thank you, Shar. Let me see if there's any public, any other public comment, any other public comment? I'm looking at our attendees. Anyone want to raise their hand on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Yeah, I think we should support it. How much are people comfortable giving? I see a couple different levels. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yeah, so I definitely agree that we should... Yeah, so I definitely agree that we should support this, and I was looking into, digging a little bit into how much Foster City has pledged, because I don't think we should be outdone by Foster City. And they gave around a little over ten thousand dollars, not necessarily for this, but for their program for supporting laptops and virtual learning. So I would throw out the ten thousand dollar mark. That was what I was thinking.
Did they donate that money, or was that through challenge grants and other things?
I believe the City of Foster City did, but I could be mistaken. Shar might be able to. She has her hand up.
Go ahead, Shar.
I can just share. So yes, the City of Foster City provided a ten thousand dollar donation for the digital innovation divide over the summer, and then in addition to that, are providing a one thousand dollar donation to this specific gala. Outside of that, there were other donations that came from the City of Foster City, both for that, for the campaign over the summer and this campaign, but they specifically have given eleven thousand dollars over the past couple of months from the city.
So are we getting credit for our education centers for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're spending on that?
You're doing that out of the goodness of your heart.
Exactly.
Okay. How about five thousand dollars?
I would be okay with that, but I would throw in one more thing then. The other thing that they were looking at, looking for are auction items, and they are looking for like things that this council can donate, like, you know, in the good old days, it used to be like breakfast with the mayor or whatever, but it's really hard.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner with the mayor, January twenty-twenty-one.
So, but it's a little, it's a little challenging. So one of the things that I was thinking of, and might kill a couple birds with one stone, that when, when the time is right, and that's a big asterisk there, but when things are open, there's a vaccine, and it makes sense, I think it'd be great to have, like, maybe perhaps bowling at a Belmatteo Ball with this council when the time is right as an auction item. So is there, could we possibly do that?
That's really intimidating, understanding how good the bowling acumen is of this council. Yes, Councilmember Pappin?
So I'm going to try to bump you up a little. So two-thirds of the, Shar, correct me if I'm not right, but isn't it that two-thirds of the kids from the district are in San Mateo?
That is correct.
So I don't know if we want to be on par with Foster City, given how many of the students that will be from San Mateo that will be benefited by a contribution that we made.
How big is their structural deficit?
Million dollars.
Don't get a lot of bang for your buck on this.
I hear Councilmember Pappin suggesting that we increase it to two-thirds, or increase our effort by two-thirds. Is that? What would that look like? Would that look like seven thousand dollars?
I don't know. I got to do the math, because I didn't, I didn't go to fancy San Mateo schools.
Well, I mean, if we're considering their one thousand dollar donation, it would be two thousand dollars, but I think your intention was?
Eleven thousand.
Drew likes the math that I just did.
I'm on board for five thousand.
Okay.
And lunch, dinner, and breakfast with the mayor in twenty-twenty-one.
So like, okay.
Seventy-two hundred dollars. Diane, sold.
Seventy-two sixty. Seventy-two sixty is the motion from Pappin and second from Bonilla, and Madam Clerk, can we call roll on that number?
Certainly. Motion from Pappin, second by Madam Bonilla. Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Aye, aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye, aye, aye. I had to get, sorry.
Mayor Gosnell?
Aye, so that passes unanimously, and I know many of us will be in attendance and supporting this gala, the first of many. And really, I think that the principle behind it of equity across the district is a brilliant principle, and we all support that very much.
Aye, caramba.
We better end this meeting. This is getting interesting.
End this meeting before we spend more money. And I know you want it to be done in a half hour, but thirty-five minutes ain't bad.
It ain't bad, and.
I have an announcement.
We're at reports and announcements. Go for it, Rick.
So on Thursday, October fifteenth, the ABAG Housing Committee will be meeting, and it's at four-thirty, and at six PM, the ABAG Executive Board will be meeting to discuss the methodology that was recommended by the Housing Methodology Committee to use for the RENA, the RENA Regional Housing Needs Allocation. I would invite anybody who's interested in this really important topic to tune in. You can get on to the ABAG website and find a link for the Zoom meeting, and pay attention, make comments, however you feel. Ahead of time, if you're interested, you should look at the agenda to find the methodology that's been recommended, but there are also, I know, two or three other methodologies that are going to come up from people who had differing opinions, members of the committee. So I could tell you right now that the methodology that was recommended by the committee would bring to San Mateo over the eight-year period between twenty-twenty-three and twenty-thirty-one, about seven thousand units, ranging from very low income, low income, moderate income, and market rate. So heavily balanced on the lower income side, because that seems to be what is most in need, and the outlook seems to be very heavily in favor of affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a state law, and equity was a very big issue. So we're seeking to align jobs with opportunity areas to keep people out of their cars and to provide otherwise equity for basically everybody who has to live and work in our area. So anyway, that's the news. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Any other reports, announcements? Did everyone receive their Measure W flyer, really helpful information from the city to help them vote on Measure W?
I did.
Lots of great things, lots of great things.
I just want to make a shout out to Patrice, our city clerk, who worked very hard to put together some voting information that was geo-optimized, so there's an interactive map for everybody to find the closest ballot drop box to you and all the hours of our voting centers. And thank you so much, Patrice, for working so hard to not just get that up online, but also arrange for all of the voting centers to be placed throughout the city. And there's really, there was a lot of consideration for geographic balance in each location. And so I know a lot of work went into it, and I just want to appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Margaret Mead said something about all the Patrices across the country and what they're able to accomplish. They truly do change the world. We're going to have more people vote in this election than ever before in our country, and it's because people like Patrice creating access. Anything else for the good of the order? It is, it's that time. It's the end of the meeting. Thanks, everybody. Our next meeting is in two weeks. I'll see you then. Appreciate it.
Thank you.